Are you ready? Okay, perfect. The June 19th regular meeting of the Planning Commission will come to order at 6:48 PM. Please rise and follow Commissioner Lujan in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lujan. May I have our Planning Commission Secretary Ria please call role?
Commissioner Lujan?
Present.
Commissioner Sakali?
For the record, Sakali did notify me that he is delayed, but he expects to arrive around 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Commissioner Morales, excused. Vice Chair Guerra?
Here.
And Chair Uva?
This is the time set aside for oral communications from the Planning Commission. Does any Commissioner wish to make an announcement, report on a conference meeting, or request items for a future agenda? I'll start to my far right.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, I said this last meeting, and I need to repeat it again because it still hasn't been corrected. So tonight, we're supposed to be voting on the March 6, 2024 minutes of the Planning Commission. They're still incorrect and does not paint the context of what-
Vice Chair Guerra, can we address that when we come to that part of the agenda?
No, because I think it's an issue all over. So I'd like to address it during my comments if that's okay.
Sure.
We don't have to vote on that now, we can vote on it later, but no, I think it's important for all of us to know that. It's still not corrected. It was not, I called yesterday and was told that that's the way it's going to be. Here's what it is, at 2 hours and 38 minutes of the recording on March 18th, here's what I said about that particular project. I said, "I don't want a logistics and distribution center in the city of Downey. I think that this is bad for the city. I think it'll change the face of Downey forever. It's 29 acres with 119 stalls, 500,000 square foot building. Our residents are going to be surprised when it actually happens. It'll be 700,000 vehicles coming into that part of the city. Concerns mitigated to a point. I don't want to be San Bernardino Riverside and so forth." So, I asked that to be reflective in the minutes during the deliberation, and all we said was, last meeting, because all I said was I voted for it. So this is what you guys, what staff thought that they should put in there, although I said all these things. All it says is, "Vice Chair, thank the members of the public for coming and supporting the project. He stated that he will vote for the project as his concerns have been mitigated. He stated he felt at ease that the project was not to be rezoned. He thanks staff for all their hard work." As you could tell, it changes the complex, it changes the meaning, it changes the point of it, and it also is, it's not transparent, and it misrepresents what I said misleading. Why is this important? Well, last, as we know, that project was appealed to the City Council. The City Council was told that, you know, that we voted unanimously, well, we did, but they didn't have a moment to see those changes in the minutes. So when Councilwoman Claudia Fermina asked how many truck trips were going to be there, and the city staff did not have an answer for it at the moment, right during deliberation. Now, if they would have had the correct minutes, that with my comments in there, they would have seen that it was 696,700, 700,000 truck trips, new truck trips to that year. So, all I'm saying is, when we do deliberations, we can't adjust it. I am very, very upset that I have to bring it up again, and when I called staff, they said that they were told by management that they had to change it back that way. This is disingenuous at best, and it changed the perception and is misrepresentative of what I said, or what should have been. I don't know if the staff in the city wanted to make it seem like this is a better project and not, there's no delusions on it. It's a terrible project that's going to change the face of the city, and I wanted it on the record. So, I'm going to ask when we vote on it now to do that, but I thought it was important to have it during my comments at this time, Madam Chair. So, if we're going to do deliberations and not just, not just the vote, please be accurate on what we said. And I just can't believe that I had to bring it up twice. I just can't believe that. That was so easy. I said all these words at the last meeting, word for word, and then that's what we got out of it, that's just taken out of context, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lujan, any items, announcements, or anything to report?
Nothing right now.
Okay, and I have none either. Okay, I'm assuming that we are going to go forward with the presentation, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Does the Community Development Director have a report on City Council action or any other general update?
I do not at this time.
Okay, great. So now, we have one public hearing tonight. Now is the time set aside for the public hearing for PLN 23-00123, and this is a site plan review, a conditional use permit, and a lot merger. Does the staff have proof of publication?
Yes.
Okay. Will the Community Development Director introduce the staff member making our presentation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have Principal Planner Alfonso Hernandez presenting this item along with other staff from Public Works. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Uva and members of the Planning Commission. For your consideration today, we'll be discussing a proposal for a new restaurant and drive-thru at 9,000 Telegraph Road. Specifically, the application is a request for a site plan review, conditional use permit, and lot merger. The applicant on file is Ryan Smith, a representative of Raising Canes. Here's a quick breakdown. We could skip that slide. Just for reference, the slide was an agenda of today's presentation, but we could skip that. The subject site is a total of 1.41 acres.
Alfonso, can we just take a quick recess here, please? Would you mind? I just need to have a word with the Chair. Thanks. Thanks.
Okay, well, let's go back to our presentation by our staff member on this project. And I guess we should make the record reflect that Commissioner Saicali has arrived. Okay.
Good evening again, Chair Uva, members of the Planning Commission. For your consideration, today we'll be discussing a proposal for a new restaurant and drive-thru at 9,000 Telegraph Road. Specifically, the application is for a site plan review, conditional use permit, and lot merger. The applicant on file is Ryan Smith, a representative of Raising Canes. Here's a quick breakdown of staff's presentation. Briefly, we'll discuss the background, then we'll move over to a site plan review, where we'll be discussing the project layout and architectural design, then over to the conditional use permit, where we'll discuss drive-through and hours of operation, then lot merger, and then we'll kick it over to our Public Works Department to discuss the traffic study and queue analysis for the project. So background and location. The subject site is a total of 1.41 acres. There are nine separate lots that make up the site. However, it appears to function more like three. In total, there are four buildings which add up to 5,902 square feet. The current businesses include a mobile gas station, a Bepes Mexican restaurant, and LA Camper Shelves. To the right, the aerial depicts the location of those businesses. I did want to note that LA Camper Shelves does appear to be no longer in operation. Here's a separate aerial to provide additional view on with the surrounding land uses and businesses. There are offices, drive-thrus, auto repair, car sales, and residential uses nearby. Here is the corresponding zoning and general plan designations for the site and the nearby area. To the left is the zoning map. The site is zoned C2. To the north is the city of Pico Vera with commercial uses off of Telegraph Road. To the east, west, and south within the city of Downey are also commercial uses. And nearby to the southeast is a multifamily residential property zoned R3, and more residential properties located a bit further east and west. To the right, we have the city's general plan map. The site's general plan designation is general commercial, which is consistent with the proposed use and the existing zoning. And here are images of the site as they were when they were in full operation. The top left is a mobile, the bottom left is the LA camper, and then the right is Bepes off of Lindell. Here's a rendering of the new proposed restaurant building and their outdoor dining to the right. The portion to the left faces Telegraph, and the portion to the right faces Lakewood Boulevard. Here are the development standards for the site. All development standards are in compliance with the municipal code, and we'll go through them now. So first, starting off with lot coverage. They are proposing 5.6%. The minimum is 50%. The 5.6% makes up a total building size of 3,481 square feet. The building height minimum, or rather maximum, is 45 feet allowed. They are proposing a one-story building at 21 feet 7 inches. They're required to provide 10% of the lot size, the total lot size, which is 1.41 acres. They are providing close to 30% of that size at 18,337 square feet. Moving over to setbacks. The front setback is off of Telegraph Road. The requirement is 15. They are providing a setback of 65, and that 15 setback will be landscaped. Off of Lakewood Boulevard, their street side, their minimum requirement, again, is 15. They're providing a setback of 81. That setback will also be landscaped. Off of Lindell, on the opposite side, again, a minimum of 15. They are providing a setback of 61, with that also being landscaped, the setback, rather, the 15 minimum. And at the rear, the minimum requirement is five feet, and they are providing a 178-foot setback. Moving on to parking. They have to provide at least 42. They are providing 43, with two accessible. With queuing, our code calls for a total of eight, four before the order board and four after before the window. As part of our requirements in our code, also, staff is allowed to ask for a queue study or a traffic study to see if that is appropriate. We've done that, and they've provided a total of 17 within two lanes, and I'll describe those in depth a bit further. And also, an additional 12 in a bypass lane, which I'll describe in depth a bit further, too, which makes up a total of 29 capacity for the queue. Outdoor dining, which they can't allow, and they have to get approved through the site plan review that we're doing here. Their proposal is for 717 square feet and a minimum wall of 42 inches. And they provide a trash enclosure, which is 312 square feet. Here's the layout of the site. At the top of the page, we have Lakewood Boulevard. At the right, we have Telegraph Road, and at the bottom, we have Lindell. Here is the building footprint. Again, that's 3,481 square feet. Above the footprint is, in blue, is the outdoor dining at 717 square feet. The entrances are symbolized with blue pentagons located here and here. And then the pickup windows are in these yellow, what look like circles at this distance. And then the trapezoids in yellow here are the order board menus where they take the orders.
Can I ask a question on this? Make it easier. Am I allowed to ask a question on this diagram? Staff? Okay. So where is the ordering? Is where the box is in the middle, right there, with the two yellow things?
So off the drive-thru, the yellow specs here that we see here, those are their order menus, and they'll take those also. But also, they'll also function at times with people on foot taking orders as well.
Okay, so they could go all the way back. And then the entrance, is that where the 65 feet from the residential is at the back end or where the entrance is? You have in page- I'm trying to make a correlation between where the drive-thru is, sir, and the residential.
I didn't want to skip two ahead. We do have a diagram that shows the 65. But just for reference, that back corner of the property is here. Directly over, diagonally over, is the 65 feet away from residential.
Perfect, thank you.
Of course. So, and here illustrates the drive-thru. The square in green is that trash enclosure. The drive-thru entrance is here, and the three drive-thru lanes, or rather, two, and the bypass lane are located here. Perfect. And here we have the circulation on site. Two vehicle entrances are located on the site, one off of Telegraph Road and the other off of Lindell. As you can tell, when you enter the site through the yellow arrows, the vehicles can access all points of the site. And again, for reference, there are two drive-thru lanes and one bypass lane. And then also, pedestrian access is accessible through Lakewood Boulevard with the red arrows indicated there. Here is the front elevation off of Telegraph. The architectural style is contemporary. The primary material is brick with a secondary material of stucco. Accent features include black trim throughout the building and black awnings or canopies over the windows and entrances. Lastly, to the right is the proposed outdoor dining. Wait, I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong clicker. Thank you. So if you reference again, brick makes up the majority of the building. That's a primary. Secondary with stucco. Some of the accent features are the black trim around the whole building and the canopies and awnings, metal awnings over the windows and the entrances. And also, to the right is their outdoor dining. Here we are. This is the elevation off of Lakewood. The materials are largely the same. The only difference here is that they're using a waste coating, a stone waste coating, around this side of the structure. Wrong clicker again. This is a site off of Lindell. This is the elevation along the drive-thru. In the red is the indicated pay window at the left and the pickup window at the right. And this is the rear of the rear elevation. Here's another rendering. This is a sky view of the corner of Lindell and Telegraph. This is a sky view towards the rear off of Lakewood. And then here is a view from Telegraph. Now, on to the conditional use permit. The application is required in order for the restaurant to operate a drive-thru. Drive-thru lanes one and two indicated on the screen are the primary lanes that will be used. They can accommodate a total of 17 cars. 70 cars has been determined to be the appropriate amount of stacking in the drive-thru queue that was provided by the applicants and reviewed by our Public Works Department. And our Public Works Department will, in more depth, present on that in just a bit. In addition to the two lanes, there is a third bypass lane. This lane can be used by people no longer wishing to make a purchase and leave the queue or in high demands, it could be used for more stacking. Specifically, that would accommodate 12 more cars. So in total, the capacity will be 29 cars. For the proposed hours of operation, staff is recommending times from 9:00 AM to midnight. The applicant would like to remain open from 9:00 AM to 3:30 AM. Staff is recommending an earlier close time of midnight because of the site's close proximity to residential. The site is 65 feet away from the closest residential property directly across the street on Lindell, which has the potential of generating concerns due to idling and ingress and egress off of Lindell and, again, because of the close proximity. In addition, noise impacts that are anticipated from the business currently do not exist. Existing uses on-site along Lindell close at 9:00 PM the latest. Therefore, the business will be introducing a new potential impact that the area currently does not experience during the late-night hours. In addition, recent drive-thru approvals have been approved with hours that do not exceed midnight. At those meetings, it was stated by the commissioners at that time that there was concerns for drive-thrus in close proximity to residential properties. Lastly, calls for service were collected at the current Raising Canes site on Firestone, which operates from 9:00 AM to 3:00 or 3:30, depending on the day. The calls for service indicate that a third of disturbance on welfare and assault calls to the business occur after midnight. And Commissioner Guerra, this is a reference I was talking about, the slide. That indicates the distance away from the residential.
So, looking at that, on this particular one, so, I guess, the thing, the ordering would start almost where that building is at, a little bit further. See that building with the two things on the side, vehicles or something, towards the bottom of it? So I guess that would be the ordering? Because that was my concern, is, you're right, it's right there, and how close that is to-
We can get an exact distance for you.
Okay.
If you want to share it. What's the distance?
I can pass it out during my presentation, or you can share information on that.
We can wait till you get to that, too. I didn't mean to get ahead of you.
We'll get the distance for you.
Okay.
And then over to the lot merger. The applicant has also filed for a lot merger. The image to the left illustrates the existing parcels. There's a total of nine. The image to the right illustrates the proposed merger. There will be two new lots. These lots will be tied together through a condition of approval. The applicant wishes to keep two separate lots for tax purposes. And now we'll pass it over to our Public Works Department to present on the traffic study and the queue analysis.
Good evening, Chairman Uva and Planning Commissioners. My name's Tim Berthistle, Principal Engineer for the city of Downey. I'm here this evening to present an overview of the traffic impact analysis for the project. The study follows the guidelines set by the city of Downey and LA County Public Works from their July 2020 Traffic Impact Analysis Guidelines. A traffic scoping agreement was prepared for the project, which was approved by staff in May 2023. And the traffic impact analysis for this project includes three major components: level of service, or LOS, analysis, the drive-thru queuing analysis, and the vehicle miles traveled, VMT screening. Each of these components is critical for understanding the potential traffic impacts of the proposed project. Moving on to the trip generation. Raising Canes will not generate any trips during the AM peak hour. For the rest of the day, the analysis shows 1,627 total daily trips, with 115 trips during the PM peak hour, 60 entering and 55 exiting. After accounting for bypass trips, the net increase is 1,564 daily trips and 52 trips in the PM peak hour. We compare this to the current land use, and the project will lead to 149 additional daily trips, although there will be 48 fewer trips in the AM peak hour and just one fewer trip in the PM peak hour. Now to the level of service, or LOS. Analysis scenarios considered in the traffic impact analysis. The consultant analyzed traffic under three scenarios: the existing condition, the opening year 2024, and the opening year 2024 plus the project. To conduct the analysis, the consultant collected peak hour volumes in April 2023, and this data allows us to project how the intersections in the vicinity will perform with the additional traffic flow from the new development. And further, on the level of service analysis. In terms of results, the level of service analysis shows that under existing conditions, all studied intersections currently operate at an acceptable level of service, which is D or better. Even with the anticipated increase in traffic from the proposed project, all intersections are expected to continue operating at acceptable levels. And finally, the drive-thru queuing analysis. the drive through queuing analysis. Looking at the drive through queuing analysis, the consultant collected queuing data from the existing Raising Canes locations in Laguna Hills, Orange and Riverside during peak times. They observed that the queue reached up to 17 vehicles. For the proposed new site, the drive through is designed to accommodate this peak demand with a capacity of 17 vehicles in the main drive through lane. Additionally, we have a bypass lane that can handle an additional 12 vehicles, bringing the total onsite capacity to 29 vehicles. This configuration ensures the street infrastructure can handle expected customer volume without causing backups into the surrounding streets.
How does it compare with the other Downey location for Raising Canes? Because that usually backs up all the way over to the, you know, it has it has backed up almost all the way to Sears in the past. So you go on a Friday night after a football game there and there's 50 cars in line. So do we have an analysis compared to the the other one?
I may ask the consultant.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And that's all I had on the traffic section. Is there any further questions?
I have a quick question on the traffic, if that's if it's the appropriate time. Can you turn left on Lakewood to go south? If you're going, can you come out of the one area to get the exit on Lakewood Boulevard? Will you be able to turn left there to go south on Lakewood?
Off of the site?
Yes, off the new site, after it's finished.
You would not be able to go left on Lakewood. There's no exits or entrances off of Lakewood.
That's good, okay. There's only entrance right there, right? Or only for for people to come in?
Off of Lakewood is completely shut, sure.
Oh, I thought you said that pedestrians could walk in. I guess pedestrians can. Okay, but not vehicles, no cars. And then being an expert at Pepe's, so when you leave there, you go into Telegraph and you park your car in the queue in the middle lane there so you can turn left on Lakewood. Is that going to be the same situation now?
I apologize, sir. Do you mind describing that one more time?
Sure, sure. So when you're exiting, and I'm not quite sure, you're exiting onto Telegraph. You now get your Raising Canes are exiting. So right now you have the ability, there's no median there. You have your ability to park yourself to go left on Telegraph, to go westbound on Telegraph. So you come out of Pepe's, you turn left and you park yourself in the middle queue, waiting to get, you know, traffic go back and then turn left to get the left hand turn lane Lakewood. Is that going to be the same possibility? I'm not saying I want that. I'm just saying, is that is that going to be the same type of thing? Are we putting and incentivizing not to turn left on Telegraph out of this location?
The markings on Telegraph will not change. If it's our understanding when we were observing the site that the markings on there don't allow that. It would it would warrant a ticket if someone did do that.
I've been doing that for 40 years, man, but okay. So I didn't know that. So, thank you.
Of course. I just wanted to conclude that staff believes all findings can be made.
You can't turn left there?
Can you hear me?
Did you know that?
Yeah, I just wanted to conclude that staff believes all findings can be made in a positive manner. And we're available for any questions.
So it's staff's recommendation that it's get approved? Is that what you're saying?
Approved with the conditions of approval.
Okay, got it.
Just to brief through the chair, if I may. Staff's resolution includes a recommendation to approve the project subject to the various conditions of approval that are one of the attachments. For further clarification of the probably the the difference between the applicant's request and what staff is recommending are related to the hours of operation. And specifically, that's condition number 13 that pertains to that matter. I would imagine that the commission would deliberate on that. And also, I I believe that the applicant has a PowerPoint presentation that would further elaborate on their operation. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Does the planning commissioners have any questions of staff? Commissioner Scioli, I believe.
You have a question. In regards with the working hours, how does it compare to the other businesses like In-N-Out and other locations? Are they the same hours as you stated here, as you're recommending?
They are not the same hours. In particular, In-N-Out, their hours of operation run until 1:00 a.m. But I should mention that there are other businesses within the City of Downey that function to 24/7 and function to 2:00 a.m. We didn't see anybody function till till 3:30, but again, we have some that function to 24/7. And the reason for that is that their conditions of approval didn't didn't state conditions or they had they had drive throughs that didn't require conditional use permit at the time. So they're allowed to function 24/7 if they like.
Okay.
So is it is it going to be open or is it going to be cleaning? Is that why they want to stay till 3:30 in the morning?
I think I defer to the applicant in terms of.
Through the Chair Commissioner, Luhon, is your question is if they would be operating up until 3:30 in the morning? That is our understanding that the applicant's request is to be able to operate their business operation to provide service up until 3:30. But I think maybe we can also have the applicant further clarify that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? I don't have any, so I think that that, thank you, Alfonso, it was great presentation.
Of course.
Before I open the public hearing and call the.
I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
So go back to that thing about the time. So you're saying that the applicant wants those hours and the staff is proposing the other hours on the right side?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
Left side is the applicant's proposed hours, right side is staff's recommended hours.
If I may, Alfonso.
Yes, sir.
So when you're recommending, you're not making it, you're not enforcing it?
It's up to the planning commission. It's part of your purview and your deliberation on.
Yeah, I think we need to deliberate this issue when it comes time for deliberation. Okay, we can discuss it amongst the four of us. Okay, and we can also ask the applicant questions as well, I think. Okay, everybody good? Before I open the public hearing and call the applicant or their representative, this would be the time for the planning commissioners to disclose any pre-hearing site visits, pre-hearing discussions that the commissioners may have had about the project. We'll start with Vice Chair Gera.
Nothing differently on there. I've gone there several times and on purpose because I'm nostalgic of eating at Pepe's more than I normally do. So, but that's it now.
Commissioner Luhon?
I haven't driven by, but it wasn't too gold stop and pull over and look at the site. It's just happened to drive by there.
Okay, Commissioner Scioli.
I have none.
Okay, and I've just driven driven through the parking lot as a customer of Pepe's many times throughout my many years of living in Downey. Okay, now we're going to open the public hearing. It is now open. Will the applicant or their representative please come forward to give testimony?
Yeah, if you just click next, it'll.
All right, I may ask him again which arrow to push, so. Thank you, Commissioners. Kristen Roberts, Senior Property Development Manager, Fry Cook and cashier with Raising Canes. We have our team here this evening. We've got Kent Walker, our Regional VP of Ops for this area. Lester Tucker, our Canes Project Manager. Members of our Civil and Traffic Team are also here. And Ryan Smith, the Project Manager for this project over the last few years is watching us on YouTube. And I promised I'd give him a shout out, so that's much as, hi, Ryan. So I also want to thank staff very, very much for their countless hours on this project with us. It has been some time and number of meetings and can't tell you how many times we've seen each other on Zooms. So it's nice to meet in person. So we are proud. Okay. We are proud to be presenting you with our second Downey restaurant this evening. Each of you as Downey leaders have likely been a part of our active community input since 2016. In 2022, 2023 alone, Canes donated over $35,000 to various Downey community organizations in addition to thousands of donated meals. This Downey community involvement is just one reason we're excited and proud to grow in Downey. Lester and Kent will speak to the site, community outreach and operations, and most importantly, our brand consistency and our hours of operation. With that, I will turn it over to Lester Tucker. Thank you for your time and appreciate you hearing us this evening.
Before I begin, good evening, Chair Uva, members of the planning commission. I have a few items that I would like to pass through.
Rhea.
I'm glad I had that exhibit made. Again, good evening. My name is Lester Tucker. I'm with Raising Canes. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and share our project for your consideration this evening. Some of the key details of this new restaurant, you'll see here on the slide. I really want to convey that this is a Raising Canes, the way Raising Canes wants a restaurant to be. This site is very different than the existing Raising Canes in the city. It's just under three times the size. Land area wise, it's 1.41 acres versus 0.5 acres. It has dual lane drive through plus an overflow lane, plus onsite stacking as well. The existing Raising Canes was a former Jack in the Box. True statement, it is the smallest kitchen in Raising Canes fleet in California. There's 88 restaurants, it's the smallest kitchen we have. Our operations vice president can talk specifics about the challenges that we've overcome there. Off the top of my head, I don't have an actual study on this, but I did do Google Earth takeoffs. And it's about 17 cars can fit on the site overall, not in the drive through, but including the the drive aisles. And then obviously, it goes beyond our our property line where our VP of Ops will talk a little bit about the calls that we receive from time to time of incidents that get called in after midnight. It's definitely a dramatic improvement in the streetscape along Lakewood and Telegraph. I think staff did a phenomenal job of working to create a real place here. It wasn't just let's build a drive through. It was let's do placemaking and let's announce the City of Downey when you're coming south on Lakewood Road. It will be a remarkable difference there. The landscape at the corner of Lakewood and Telegraph, I'll point out, staff mentioned it's a minimum of 15 feet on three sides. At the corner of Lakewood and Telegraph, it's 45 feet of landscape at the corner there. And it's roughly 38 to 40 feet at the Lindell and Telegraph corner as well. So it's going to look beautiful. There's some additional information in there. I don't know if you guys can see the slide on your screens or if you want me to kind of go down through them. It's it's an ideal shape for us and configuration. It has our most efficient kitchen prototype, which allows us to move the cars through much, much faster. The national average on this prototype is less than three minutes from the time you order till you're driving out with fresh hot chicken. Are you able to see the bullet points on your screens? Okay, great, I don't need to belabor all of them then. Let's see here. Understanding recent issues. We are aware, we are engaged business owners in the city. Kristen elaborated on, you know, the the involvement that we have with the city. We truly make communities where we are. We like to be a part of the fabric and we do our homework. We know the situation on Manzanar. I understand and have tracked the the Chick-fil-A approval on Sarah Peace. Noise, traffic, just, you know, all of those interface challenges where you have these zones that are near each other. And it's not a unique situation. It happens in every city and it's more sensitive in infill locations in Southern California and built out environments where it's become super important to focus on thoughtful design. So we're really happy with the way we worked with staff to come up with the most purposely thought through site plan so that our business can thrive without creating calamity in the neighborhoods around us. Go to the next slide here. This intersection is characterized as a major arterial. It's also a couple of football fields away from the I-5 freeway. So where you have commercial zones and major arterials, it's supposed to be busy. This is where commerce is intended to happen. But again, where you have these zone interfaces and nearby residential, it's really important to have experts designing your project. And I feel we have done that with staff here. We always get to know our neighbors. Staff of the city does not require that we go out and meet with the community in the neighborhoods that we serve, but we do because we actually really care. We want to know what they think. We want them to be informed. We want them to share their feelings, good and bad. We want to know because if there's things that we can address, we want to address them. We want to assure them that we're not a flash in the pan. We are not a franchise. We're not going to be reliant on some franchisee who may or might not care about them. We are a corporate owned store. We have tremendous pride in our properties. You can look at any Canes in any city at any time and it will be in tip top shape, landscape, trash. Everything else is taken care of early in the mornings on every site, every day. The fact that we go out and meet with our neighbors kind of underscores the regard for the communities that we're in. I provided to you a petition that I personally went out and collected signatures in the area residence. I canvassed the community on two different days. I also attended the the golf tournament and shared this flyer, this young man Guillermo is holding here to let people in the community know what we're doing and to get that feedback. We wanted to know what's important to them. I asked them about, have they heard about the project? Everybody had, everyone. What's the most important thing to you? What are you fearful of in the project? Where do you work? What issues are going on in the neighborhood now? Key things for us to understand to make sure that our operation is going to be harmonious with with our neighbors. So after talking about this, I spent, I don't know, eight hours, I think it was 160 some odd doors I knocked on. We collected 39 signatures asking you to approve this project with late night hours. That's kind of who we are. Canes serves the third shift. And we'll touch on that in just a moment at the at the end here. Let's let's talk a little bit about what we heard. Here's kind of the canvassing Wednesday, June 12th, this past Saturday, June 15th. I I talked to not only the village apartments and the residents there, but also the homes west of Lakewood, where we've had issues in the past, where we know that there's been a lot of concern. And there was mitigation done that the the residents there are happy with. It's peaceful on that street south of Taco's Dawn. Shout out to those tortillas, by the way, wow. So that's kind of what we did out in the in the community. I felt like it was really successful. There was a lot of excitement. I'll talk about that next. There was there was people who were asking if I was kidding because they were so excited that something was going to be there that that they were going to find useful. Now, I personally find Pepe's very useful. I'm a Pepe's fan. There was one near my college and we frequented it. I've I've been to this Pepe's a number of times, having a project in the city and frequented the site at different days and different times and doing events in Downey. So we'll have some comments from the owner of Pepe's in a little while, but there, you know, to be clear, there was definitely some people who were expressed concern. The single biggest concern I heard from the village apartments was parking. There is a an Sydney Auto is there. They have a lot of cars. They've been in town for 29 years or something like that. They haven't, I'm not sure what their history is with cars on the street. I just know that the people in the apartments are allowed to have one car inside their gate. And most of them have two cars and they have to park on the street and it's. and most of them have two cars, and they have to park on the street, and it's always kind of a shuffle out there. Every time you visit this location, if you've said you recently drove through here, you probably noticed a number of cars on Lindell Avenue. No one expressed concern over noise. A lot of people work later nights, like I said, the third shift. We have the bottling company, Kaiser, Food for Less, grocery store stays open till 12. Couple of people, Guillermo was one of them, works there, said, "I'd love to have a different option than McDonald's after 12 o'clock at night." And our operations team can talk about the people who we serve. We serve first responders. There's a lot of healthcare in the city. So, we're excited about being open late. It's the hours that we have at our current store now. And universally, Canes is known as someplace that you can get a good meal fresh late at night. Obviously, the loss of Pepe's is disappointing to some. The biggest things in the takeaways there were that they don't want to see queuing backing out onto Lakewood, excuse me, onto Telegraph, and they don't want to see parking and stacking out onto Lindell. That would block their ability to get home. Totally understand that. We've done everything we can to maximize the amount of vehicles that we can have on this site. And again, it's three times the existing site. So, just in the drive-through, there's 17, there's another 12 in the bypass lane. That's 29 cars. It doesn't include the drive aisles, which would even accommodate more cars. And again, this is the most efficient kitchen we have. So, we expect to be able to capture all the cars that we will serve onsite. Some people think there's too many chicken restaurants coming. Some people had noted it would greatly improve the aesthetics. They were excited about the fact that there's progress happening there. LA Camper Shelves has been empty for quite a while. You have a used car lot, you have a gas station with $7 gas. I haven't seen a whole lot of cars in there. The gas station is open 24 hours, so that is one adjacent use that's currently open after midnight next door. Jump to the next one, as I mentioned. Let's see here. Yeah, hours of operation. We agree with everything staff has conditioned us with. We work closely with engineering. There's a public sewer through a private lot right now in an easement on this site. We're going to great expense to comply with Public Works policy and relocate that sewer across Lakewood into the alley in front of Arthur's. So, we're definitely pushing all our chips in to make this site the best possible that it can be. We are requesting the hours that we typically have. None of the neighbors I spoke to had concern over late-night hours. I specifically asked that question of the neighbors. Parking, again, is their primary concern on Lindell Road. Queuing and avoiding any queuing coming out onto Telegraph or into Lindell was also the primary concern, though. A lot of people don't understand how efficient our, this is our Raising Canes prototype can be, because the experience here is in a small Jack-in-the-Box with a limited kitchen. So, I'll let our VP of Ops talk a little bit about how efficient this site is, the kind of technology that we use at our order boards. You know, we have automatically lowering volumes. We're not, I also like to differentiate between Taco's Dawn and the newly-approved and almost-open Chick-fil-A. This site isn't surrounded by three sides with residential use, as Chick-fil-A is on Serapee's. There's no, we're a block or two away, but we're farther away from the elementary school. So, there's less concern, in our view, that that would be an impactful issue. It's also not a residential-only street, as Manzanar was. You have this very busy, small, successful restaurant with no parking and no dining room. They have three picnic tables over there, and it could be, you know, quite a crowd. And I can understand why the residents on Manzanar were upset, that the impact on their homes was negative. And this is a very different site. This is an isolated site that we can control the whole thing. Our street is not residential-only, as pointed out by staff. We have other uses on our street, including the used car lot, a church, an office building, medical center. And so, they are different. But as a matter of fact, the people at the Village Apartments are super excited about the opportunity to have this Raising Canes here. So, we have great support from the neighbors on our street. So, in closing, I don't want to take up any more time. I just ask you again, you saw the slide from staff. This project is compliant with every single development standard. There is no city restriction on business hours. There is no code that we need to comply with. It is a discretionary. I understand, and we understand, why staff made the recommendations that they're doing as an abundance of caution with things that have happened in the recent past. And I'd like to differentiate this project from that, and differentiate Raising Canes from those, and ask kindly that you honor your commitment and fiduciary responsibility, not be swayed by any kind of emotional appeals. This is the right project in the right location. It has the right design, and I respectfully ask that you approve this project and implement the existing Raising Canes hours in the city of Downey as applicable to this project. Thank you so much.
Hi, everyone. Kent Walker, I work with all the kind of LA and Northern Orange County restaurants. I don't have a presentation necessarily to keep going here, but I thought I'd be the right person to answer some questions, probably regarding the hours of operations. And as he mentioned a little bit, the efficiencies in this building in terms of the way traffic can move through this one versus our existing Downey one. I could probably start with that second point, and talk about the size of the kitchen, the amount of fryers, the, you know, really the efficiency we've built over the years of learning a lot from the first Downey. You know, the first Downey restaurant was the busiest one in our entire system. We learned that Southern California is quite a bit busier than Louisiana and everyone else, so we started building restaurants a lot differently. If you've ever been to a Canes outside of Downey, or specifically the newer ones, they move a lot faster. They're about 30% faster, roughly, so the lines never get as long. We continue to also build Raising Canes closer and closer together, and they somewhat alleviate the traffic at the existing one. You know, Downey was the first restaurant by itself, kind of in a wide, you know, 30-to-40-minute drive. Now, we have many more closer. Those lines continue to shrink every time we open a new one. We have a couple more coming actually before this site opens as well. So, we see those lines getting much smaller and not queuing onto streets like we used to, for those two exact reasons, just more around, and the kitchens are now faster. In terms of the hours of operations, I know there was something mentioned about some police calls after midnight. Typically, and nearly proven at all of them, is the police related to things after midnight are always related to the size of a parking lot. You mentioned the size of the parking lot there by Sears and everything else. The more places young kids can go and park their cars and hang out after they're done eating is typically where all of that, those calls come from, and sometimes crimes. But rarely does it ever, ever happen in a restaurant or in our specific parking lot. It's usually around the building. So, I think part of this site is that we don't have that excess area for certain things like that to happen. So, other than that, I wanted to share those couple of things, and if you had any questions regarding the operations of it, or any two of those.
Okay, so we can now open it up for our commissioners to ask questions? Okay. I'm sure we're going to have questions.
Yeah.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Gera.
And thank you. I was there for your grand opening, was that 2016?
Yeah, about eight years ago, yeah.
You know, yeah. So, I was there for the grand opening. One of the things, by the way, I enjoy about that, and I know it is a smaller footprint site, you had a lot of Downey memorabilia or signage inside, and I assume you're going to keep going with that. We love our history and our Downiness, if you will. So, and I hate to ask you this, and maybe this is something for staff, how late is Chick-fil-A going to be open? To Chick-fil-A down the street from them?
Our conditions for the last two Chick-fil-A's that we approve are to midnight.
Yes, to midnight, too. Okay, all right. Sorry, that doesn't bode well for you guys, but you know.
Yeah, I mean, not to jump in or anything, but brand-wise, they are always a midnight restaurant across the country.
Sure, sure. And I'm the chaperone for the police, I do a lot of ride-alongs, and we do, we have eaten late at night with our Code Seven, with our fellow police officers. How many people a day do you guys expect there versus compared to what you do with the other one? And I don't want to take any proprietary information, I'm just kind of curious what your thoughts.
Yeah, you know, we don't think it's going to be as busy as the first one, just for the fact that it's going to pull Downey residents now in two different directions, right? So, it'll pull a certain amount of people from that first one. Number-wise, you know, I don't have an exact number for you today, but I would call it somewhere, somewhere definitely south of the original one.
And how, where's your next Raising Kane on the Pico side, if you will? Is there one in Pico Rivera?
Yeah, we have one in Pico Rivera. We're also building one in Norwalk and Compton that'll actually open before this site will. We have a South Gate, we have Lakewood, Artesia, and we continue to kind of infill, so, and they all, in a good way for us, because we're growing sales, they're all getting less busy individually.
Right. I'm just worried, I'm not worried, I'm just interested about the Pico site, because that's obviously, you're going to be drawing people from Pico. Pico Rivera is in the middle of the street, they're across.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have one on Paramount in Pico, and then a couple in Whittier.
What is your estimated time of starting if it passes the Planning Commission tonight?
Starting?
Starting, building and completion and so forth. Okay. And your timeframe after that?
Chair, they need to come to the microphone, so that we can have the proper record.
Thank you. Excuse me. We do have our CDs ready to go. We were pending approval, obviously, to make sure if there's any modifications we need to, we would need to, I wouldn't be able to determine staff approval level, but once we started construction, it's typically about a 195. I think it may have popped up to 225 since COVID, but we get after it when we start building, so we're very excited. The landlord does have delivery and work to do with the existing businesses, so once that window closed, then we would begin construction.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
And, Madam Chair, the question that Vice Chair Gera had regarding the number of people served per day, in the staff report, we do have that approximately 1,500 customers would be served daily.
Commissioner Luhon, do you have any questions?
No, I just wanted to say thank you guys for, you know, bringing this to Downey. I was in the commission, Planning Commission, back before you guys came, when we used to drive all the way to Huntington Beach to go get Raising Canes, because my wife and my kids loved it. Playing soccer, travel soccer, it's always, you know, playing in different cities. And so then, when the Community Development Director said, "Hey, you know, do you guys have any recommendations? Looking for new," I had to say, "Raising Canes." And then all of a sudden, the director at that time, Aldo Schindler, is like, you know, "It's something that we were talking about, and here you guys are, and we're building a second one." So, thank you guys for doing that. Just again, just regarding the hours, it's because the other policies is we have so many places that are open to like 2:00 AM, and there's always a concern, you know, just the safety and stuff. And, you know, I know, you know, Gera here is out there driving around with the police, but he's protected. So regardless, it's just always a concern, you know, being out that late. You have kids working, young adults, you know, so they're the ones who have to work. I'm in education, I'm not in business, so I always look out for my students who are working. You guys hire them. There is a time for, they're not supposed to be working past, you know, I know on the weekends, they do work little extra hours and stuff, and, you know, and that's a concern that I always have, you know, with them. And just, you know, they're working at 2:00 in the morning, they got to get home, too. So, just keep that in mind, you know, for our kids, our students here, and Downey, and or, you know, Pico Rivera, if you hire kids from there, too, you know, so, okay.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and just to address the late-night security concern as well, is a vast majority, including this one, we have, we employ off-duty services. The company's called ODS, but that's what it stands for, off-duty police officers working security while we're there at night. So, we'll have a minimum of one, if the site requires it, two or three.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Commissioner Saicoli.
Thank you all for coming, and I really apologize for coming late. I got tied up at work, but I made it here, and I'm glad to see you over here also, providing more business to the city of Downey. I am in favor, actually, having the hours up till that late of the hours. Basically, you're accommodating for a lot of other people who work late, sheriffs, police and fire, and other youngsters who like to venture after midnight, after they get out from their movie, they're hungry, they want to get something to eat. Hey, let's go to Raising Kane. I think this is a great opportunity for them to do that. I just have one question regarding the issue with the noise level, and I'm not sure what noise was in reference to. I don't think, I understand, what is the possibility of having noise to the neighborhood around?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, the traffic itself is what will create the noise. You know, we've put up signs if the, you know, radios are too loud or anything of that nature, asking customers to keep that stuff down. But a majority of the noise would be coming from the cars themselves. And then, we typically either have the people outside ordering on the tablets or the speaker post, but we've always set those to a degree that they could be heard from the nearest living person.
Okay, and the delivery to your place from 3:00 AM to 7:00 AM?
Typically till 9:00 AM.
Till 9:00 AM?
Yeah.
Okay. And that does not affect any noise level at all, middle of the night, after 3:00 o'clock in the morning?
It should not, no. I think, specific to this site, we'd probably have to do the stretch and feet, but it would be parked on the Lakewood side, I believe, is where the back door would go, so it'd be pretty far away.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Typically, that after midnight crowd, do you find in your other restaurants that it's a younger, young kids coming? Is that typical or not typical?
It is. Obviously, more near like college campuses, definitely. That's kind of the DNA of Canes, by the way. We started on a college campus, that's why the late nights started. But when we came to California, and specifically Los Angeles, we learned that, to a couple of points we've already made, was it's a lot of third-shift workers. There's a lot of people in some uniform, whether they're working at the airport, or the hospital, or something of that nature, eating there. Now, that's still mixed in with the kids, to your point, that they go to the movies at midnight, and they're hungry afterwards, and, you know, the weekends or the summers, they want to hang out. So, it's a mix. Each neighborhood's different. But the Downey specific, the first one, is probably what I just mentioned. It's a ton of third-shift workers, mixed in with some kids.
Yeah, because I live very close to the Downey one, and if I'm coming home from an event or something, and it's, you know, after 1:30 or so in the morning, it's what I see in that drive-through, and it's a very long line, is usually young kids in those cars, you know, which is fine. They have to eat, too, when they're hungry late at night.
Right. Yeah, that parking lot promotes, you know, the cool cars hanging out together.
Exactly.
As much as them wanting to come to Canes, I think it's also to hang out after, because there's a place to hang out, yeah.
Correct, okay. And then, I don't, I just don't remember, I thought that there was a nightclub somewhere at that intersection of Lakewood and Telegraph, right?
It's on the Pico side.
Yes. Is that still open, do you know?
I do know that it's open. I don't know the, how busy it is, or what kind of crowd it's going to necessarily draw, but it is open.
Okay, okay. Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any additional? No? Okay. May staff confirm that there has been any correspondence in favor or in opposition?
No correspondence.
None? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or in opposition of the application? Members of the audience wishing to come forward to address the Planning Commission regarding the public hearing project may come up to the podium now. I don't know, was, were you given numbers? You did give numbers?
Green.
Okay, the green numbers. Okay, so we'll start with, we'll be calling the green card numbers for this project. I remind the speakers that you have three minutes to address the Planning Commission regarding the public hearing project only. So, can we have green card number one come forward?
Good afternoon, or good evening, rather, Madam Chair, members of the commission, staff. First of all, I'd like to thank you, commission, for your service to the community, and thank the staff for your professionalism and the hard work you're doing writing the reports. I know we may not always agree on things, but I do appreciate your efforts. I'm here on two issues. One, regarding the applicant's request for extending operating hours. And then, two, some suggestions I have for minor improvements to Lindell Avenue, which I hope will help improve some safety issues there that I didn't see addressed in the staff report. As I understand, the hours after midnight are really my concern as well. I live near the proposed project, and the ambient noise levels do change after midnight. I mean, you start hearing noises when boom boxes are going... I mean, you start hearing noises when boom boxes are going off, there's a liquor store across from Pico Rivera, it's quite a distance away, but you still hear, when occasionally they put their music on, or a bar leaves their doors open, you hear that, and you hear thumping noises, and I don't believe it's going to be the restaurant itself, but I believe it's going to be the patrons that go to the business that are going to be the problem. If they're racing their cars as they leave the establishment, once they leave the premises, it's not really their problem at this point in time, it becomes everybody else, but we're going to be pointing the finger at them, and that's the establishment that the noise and problems are created from. And so I think, I see a problem putting the burden on residents to, to call the city, call the police departments to try to address this issue after midnight. And I do understand that they do control it from the, the intercom system, but it's just, it's what happens when they patronize it there. They don't have controls on the patrons, especially as they leave the site. And my question would be, why? Why would you even want to subject the residents to having to call the police, call the city, make them your enforcement people to have to initiate the actions all the time? Why not be proactive and address these issues? The deliveries after 3:00, the only issues I have there is when I hear trucks now, when they drop their, their lift gates, or dropping things, you hear it in the distance. So, I don't know how they operate at 3:00 in the morning, but I sure hate to find that out afterwards, and after it's been approved for those hours. The second issue I have is regarding the minor improvements to Lindell. At the end of the cul-de-sac, there's an opening that allows traffic for southbound Lindell traffic to enter the five interchange, excuse me, the five off-ramp to get to Lakewood Boulevard. Oftentimes, and this is a changing pattern that has just occurred in the last couple months, I'm not sure if you've been got picked up by the, the traffic reports, but you'll have cars that are so close to the opening that it creates a...
Okay, your time is up.
Okay.
Sorry.
Through, through the chair, if I may ask for just the completion of that sentence so staff can properly address the concern?
Great, perfect.
There are three choke points, or two choke points along Lindell, and one is at the intersection, or excuse me, at the opening of the cul-de-sac, the other is at about 100 feet north of Telegraph Road. I think there's a simple solution, red curb the area so that you don't have these choke points where they create situations where you're going to clip a car, they're going to damage public property. You have a case situation at the, the 100-foot mark north of Telegraph, where you have the median here, you have cars that are sticking out either forward, or their back ends are sticking out where the curb occurs. And I think just some simple red curb would, would address those traffic circulation problems.
Okay, thank you.
And I think also for the driveways, if you have some vision clearance, because the street is pretty packed.
Great, thank you so much, sir. Green card number two. Okay, I guess they left. Green card number three. No? Rhea, how many cards did we pass out? Oh, only one. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, number four and five.
Oh, you can see it, oh my gosh. I'm so sorry, okay.
I heard three, so.
You, yeah, okay, sorry, gosh. Does the applicant care for some rebuttal time, since there was someone coming, coming up?
No, I, I appreciate the, the comment that we received from the, the neighborhood in, in public hearing here. I will reiterate that, you know, and I put this in my presentation that you have there, that Canes is willing to work with the city to try and address any kind of concern caused by us on Lindell Avenue. We'll post no Canes parking on Lindell Avenue. Again, the bottleneck for parking and what you heard from the comments seem to be related specifically to the amount of cars that are being parked on that location, both from the apartments, but also overflow parking appears to be taking place from the Sydney Automotive along that area. And so that's, that's what we would ask, that, you know, potentially we can help address. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Am I allowed to ask a question of the applicant? Are we still in that portion?
It's still open, so yes.
So, how did you, did, did Raising Canes or your company go and ask to buy this property? Or was the property owner selling and reached out to you? How did, how did this come about?
I'll defer to our... Thank you for having us, planning commission. I'm Scott Silverberg, I am here on behalf of the landlord. I do not live in Downey, but I am a property owner in Downey. In this capacity, I'm a consultant for the ownership, who is a multi-property owner in Downey, and also a business owner in Downey. So this situation is not a big developer coming and buying a property and kicking tenants out, they are the operator of the mobile. He owns a few gas stations around LA County, and he's converting some of them into non-gas stations. The acquisition of Pepe's was a deal between the two ownerships, the ownership of Pepe's restaurant property was also the operator of the restaurant. Nathan is here tonight, if you'd like him to speak, I'm sure you'd be willing, he's not offering that up at this moment, but we didn't come in and buy a property and kick a tenant out, we negotiated with the owner of the property, who is also the owner of the restaurant. Does that answer the question? Yeah, okay.
It pleases the chairwoman, I'd sure like to hear from, and the reason I say that is because it's different when the property, from a community standpoint, when the property owner and the, you know, Pepe, I mean, nothing personal, nobody cares about the gas station, but Pepe's people care about, and we're going to get yelled at tomorrow from the community, because we're losing, so I, I wouldn't mind having the Pepe's owner come up and say something if they're here.
Nathan, are you willing to talk to her?
Okay. All right. If we can help you find you another location in there, being Downey, it'd be great. So anyways, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. One last comment I'll make in regards to the public comment received. We did work quite hard with staff on the boundary of our property, and recall, all three sides of our property is landscaped with a minimum of 15 feet of landscaping, which should help mitigate noise concerns. If there are future noise concerns, you're dealing with the right corporate citizen to stand up and address them. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other comments, commissioners?
I have a question to the applicant also, if you don't mind. Hearing what the gentleman said about the noise level and what have you, I would like to know what are the implication if you operate till 2:00 AM instead of 3:00 AM?
Well, I'll let our operations team manage that question. We're certainly, you know, desirous of our typical hours, our brand identity being open late. From time to time, we will close the dining rooms early and leave the drive-throughs open, but I'll leave it up to the Canes representatives to answer that question. Thank you.
Hi. You know, for us, the hours, for us is a big brand consistency thing, for the customers, the consumers, of understanding that they can go to Downey 1, or Downey 2, or in any other city at a certain time, right? Someone coming at 2:30 and realizing it closed after their 2:00 shift was over. For us, we, we'd like that to be consistent.
And the first one, you said Downey 1, they operate the same hour to 3:00 AM as well?
3:30, yes.
3:30, I see, okay. Thank you.
Really?
Okay, seeing no more questions, then I guess I am, I will close the public hearing at this time. Does the planning staff have a recommendation?
Yes, staff recommends the planning commission adopt planning commission resolution number 24 dash zero, sorry, 4031, approving the PLN 2300123 with the, the draft resolution in your package.
Great, thank you, Alfonso. Now is the time for the planning commission to deliberate. Does the commission have any questions at this time, or would the commission like to discuss the item?
I want to talk about the hours.
Yes, agree.
You know, the old line under nothing good happens after midnight kind of thing, right? And I've, I've been around too long, too. I understand the brand identity about being able to come and eat late, I think it also gives them a competitive advantage when the other chicken place that's down the street is closed at midnight, but I don't know, man, I can't believe we'd approved 3:30 in the morning before. I'm not, I'm not in favor of going that late, but, I mean, I think there's a consideration before, between the midnight and the 3:00 AM, but, and I'm willing to have that discussion to see how my fellow commissioners feel about that, but there's no way I want it to be open till 3:00 in the morning, in my opinion, so.
And I agree with that comment, and I understand it's your business plan, like you very, very well explained to us, but maybe we can come up with some kind, some kind of a compromise here, because we're, we're pretty good at doing that. But I'll let the rest of you make your comments before we try to go in, in a different direction, maybe.
Well, I think that for the most part, like I said, it's their branding, so, I mean, I'm not up at that late at night, but I know if that's the way that their people do go out and eat, and from what I understood, from I heard from our commissioners right now, that people who are in the medical, and, you know, police, fire, they go, and they go get, eat there. Now, they mentioned that the dining room might be closed, so it might be just be the drive-through. So it's not where they're going to have, I'm assuming, like, again, I don't go 3:00 in the morning to eat, but it might not be that busy, per se, to say that, like, a regular peak time where they have, you know, 100 cards trying to get in there to eat. You know, so I, I, right at this point, I think, to, and we have the Raising Cane that opens at 3:30, I'm at this point, I would be in favor of having it open at 3:30.
Okay.
One of the comments that I have is, I understand that if someone knows about Raising Cane, 2:00 in the morning, oh yeah, they close at 3:30, I'm aware of that, they don't have to check in, what have you, but at the same time, we need to be cautious about the noise level to the residents who lives nearby. And what's the possibility of us, assuming we, we accept the, the hours that the applicant is, is providing, and we, further down the road, we hear that there's a lot of concerns regarding noise, can we go back and say, you know what, we've been having a lot of issues with this, with these hours because of that area? Can we revisit that again in the future, say, you know what, these hours are really late, can we reduce them down a little bit?
I, oh, I think I know the answer, if I may, they would have to come up for another public hearing, and we'd have to have a public hearing on it.
Okay.
Right? Is that correct?
Yes, through, thank you, Chair Scioli, and yes, you are correct, Chair Uva, in that if the planning commission approve the project with the certain hours specified in the conditions of approval in the resolution, then the applicant would have to adhere to those. Any request or modifications to the hours would have to come before the planning commission as an agendized item, and because it is not a minor modification, but a modification that would be on the major side of an amendment to a condition of approval that would warrant a new public hearing to be set. But with that said, there are other options for the commission to consider, for example, providing a, kind of a test period, if you will, allowing a certain amount of hours that are not recommended by staff, but allowing either what the applicant's requesting, or some other hour that the commission determines, and allow it to operate on a test period to determine whether or not those hours are appropriate. So if the commission could discuss that, but I just thought I would share that, that is also an option.
Sure. My comments were going to be, I'm looking at it from two different perspectives. On our page 23 of our agenda, item number 13, was the permitted hours of, of operation for the restaurant, the outdoor dining, and the drive-through. We could maybe, we discussed, but maybe we could decide which one of those three would be open later, or something would close down earlier, come up with something there. Or my second thought is just pigging off of what Irma just, piggybacking off of what Irma just said, perhaps, perhaps allowing them to go by what they're requesting, not what staff is requesting, and have it in our record that it would be for a six-month, let's just call it trial period, and at the end of that six months, staff would review the police calls, maybe code enforcement would go out and test with their little device, test the noise levels at the drive-through or at the restaurant, and then come back with a report, all internally with staff, and if everything was fine, then we could give them another six months, maybe, and that would be a full year, and if everything still came out fine, then they would be, then that restriction would be removed. Does that make sense?
So, you're proposing a certain hours for, for the drive-through, certain hours for the restaurant, and, and then a limited time period of six months to try it out, kind of thing?
Well, not necessarily all of that altogether. We could do it where certain parts of the, of the restaurant have certain hours, or not do that, and just make it until 3:30 with the six-month and the six-month trial period, and see what kind of calls and what kind of feedback we get from the community. Just a suggestion.
I like the, you know, the drive-through less concerns me, even though it's 65 feet from that corner there, that's, that's a big deal, but boy, getting people getting in and out of 3:00 in the morning and slamming doors and doing, to go inside, that's just, that's really concerning to me. So, I'm not, I don't know, I understand the business model, I'm not in favor of 3:30 in the morning, I'm just not. It's just, there's no way I can vote for that. So, I, I don't mind trying it, trying 2:00 in the morning or something, later than what staff recommends, and that should be a trial thing on there, but man, yeah, 3:30 in the morning on there, that's late.
Okay.
Or early.
How, how late is the staff recommending, is it till midnight or 2:00?
Midnight is what our report says.
Okay. I think 12:00 midnight is a little bit too early for the, for business, and at the same time, 3:30 is maybe a little bit late, so we have to do a little bit of compromise. And I, I think if you shave off one hour from 3:30 to 2:30, would be, would be a little bit more beneficial to, to the public, to the residents nearby, and at the same time, they don't lose that much business around between 2:30 and 3:30. The fact that I, I asked a question, can we revisit that again? There's a potential that we may not, we may not want to come back and revisit this over and over again, it's just too cumbersome, people will forget about what took place, and a member of the public, then I keep coming back, yeah, you know, I, I still hear a lot of noises, they probably won't do that. And reports from the police department may, well, the only way you can find out about if anything happened is you get the police report, or they just got called to that area at between the hours of 2:30 and on out, until maybe 3:30, and that's the only way you're going to find out if there's any issues coming on. So what I'm recommending is just, let's go to 2:30 instead, until 3:30.
Okay?
I, I think knowing that nightclub across the street, when they get out and they're going to come across the street on there, that's not such a nice nightclub, in my opinion, and we've had a lot of issues there. I wouldn't go further than 2:00. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just wouldn't go, because I think you're going to have that, I wouldn't go, I wouldn't go later than 2:00. I'm willing to go 2:00 and keep it that way, unless there's some issues on there, but I, I don't know, 2:30 in the morning, I wouldn't do it.
Okay, I agree with 2:00, 2:00 AM, I agree with that. Commissioner Scioli, can you?
No, he made, he made a good point. Does a bar, oh, oh, closes at 2:00 AM or 3:00 AM?
No, they have to, they have to close at 2:00, because it's alcohol.
Close at 2:00, right? Or the last call is at 2:00. People get out maybe at 3:00, or they have to be out of their place by 2:00.
I don't know that, sir.
I think, I think last call is, in a bar, is 1:30, and I think they have to be out by 2:00, but I, I'm not sure of that.
Pre- receive the alcoholic beverage control, they'd have to be out by 2:00, they can't sell past 2:00.
Yeah. Commissioner Luhon, any comments?
I'm open for...
You're open for, okay.
Yeah.
Any further deliberation? Are we ready for a motion? I don't want to push the issue if we're not ready for the motion.
So the, the one comment I want to say too, because this is something that we saw on social media, and we, we've all gotten some calls on it, you know, and I understand some of the frustration for residents, I mean, residents sometimes losing a, a beloved, you know, Pepe's, if you will, but it's always the right of the property owner to sell their property and somebody else to buy it, and, you know, the, the property owner's rights always come first, and a kid, a city can't... A city can't designate the type of thing, we can't say, we want an Arby's there, or McDonald's, or whatever, it is what the market drives, you know, and I always tell people, that's why we have seven McDonald's, because Downey residents, obviously, McDonald's is not stupid, they wouldn't build a seventh restaurant if they didn't think they could make money on it. So I understand, I have no problems with them, and there's a lot of conditions, reading this, that apply, and coming in here. The biggest concern to me was the 65-foot and the timeframe, and I think those things have been answered, so I'll be glad to make a motion to accept all those things with the condition of the 2:00 AM.
And that would be for all aspects, the outdoor dining, the restaurant, and the drive-through, correct?
Yeah, do you guys want to talk about the outdoor? Or is that, are we comfortable with that?
No, but they're recommending 12:00 AM for the indoor dining. They're not recommending 2:00 AM for the indoor dining.
No, I think they said that they would do that if that was a requirement.
Yes, Chair and Commission, for clarification, the recommendation by staff for the indoor, outdoor, and drive-through is until midnight, and the applicant is requesting until 3:30 AM for those three, indoor, outdoor, and drive-through. 3:30 AM, did I say something different? 3:30.
3:30.
Yes, it's on Page, PC Agenda, Page 10, Table 4, Proposed by Applicant, Indoor Dining, Outdoor Dining, Drive-Thru. The applicant's requesting, Proposed by Applicant, until 3:30 AM daily, and staff is recommending until midnight daily for those three items.
Okay.
Chair Uva, the applicant would like us to show the ones that they propose on the slide, is that okay for us to do?
Show it up there? Sure.
You know, the one thing that's interesting, too, that we haven't addressed, when you look at this chart, it does say it's a little bit different, too, that Page 10, as Irma indicated, in that homeowner down there, the deliveries, they're asking from 3:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and staff is recommending 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So it's a little bit different, too, than what they're recommending. I understand getting deliveries at, you know, 4:30, 5:00 in the morning, and the truck lifting now, so, I mean, that gentleman had validity, in my opinion, so.
Yeah.
You need to talk about also delivery time, maybe we need to change that to, let's say, 5:00 AM, set at 3:00 AM.
Okay.
Something to consider, because, and he's right, they, these trucks do make noise and what have you, and 3:30 is really critical, people are deep asleep around 4:00 AM. So what I'm recommending is, perhaps we should consider 5:00 AM till further into the day.
Chair Uva? I would like to add, the applicant has disclosed to us that they're okay with what we recommended for the delivery hours.
The 5:00 AM?
Beyond...
Oh, the 7:00 AM?
7:00 AM.
Awesome, okay.
7:00 AM to 9:00 PM deliveries?
Correct.
Okay.
And I just, I want to, I apologize, I think I interrupted someone. I just want to clarify that the slide presented by the applicant is actually, differs from staff reports, in that the slide in front of you is what the applicant is modified request to operate Sunday through Wednesday until 3:00 AM, and then Thursday, Friday, and Saturday until 3:30 AM. I think that's...
But, for clarification, it says drive-through open until 3:30 on that Sunday through Wednesday.
Correct, thank you for that.
So my motion would still stand for the 2:00 AM, and then, obviously, the delivery part, as the staff recommended here, that's the thing here, so.
Okay, so do we have a second on Vice Chair's motion?
I second.
Okay.
Could I get clarification, Chair Uva, the 2:00 AM recommendation would apply to indoor, outdoor, dining, and a drive-through?
I believe that's his motion, is that correct?
Do we want to discuss that? I mean, I understand, the drive-through is a given, okay?
Yeah.
But do we want it open the inside, and be people outside at 2:00? I mean, I guess that's okay, I mean, I don't know, yeah, you know, I know, okay. I wouldn't sit out there at 1:30 in the morning, but, okay.
Some people like to sit inside instead of driving.
That's okay, all right. Yes, my motion stands for all three until 2:00 AM, and the deliveries on there, and I don't have a restriction regarding the days of the week, just on all of them, because it fits with, we're talking about ourselves here, so 2:00 AM on any of the days of the week.
Thank you for that clarification, and I may also point out, the applicant indicated during their presentation that they have onsite security of at least one personnel that would assist with monitoring the operations for indoor and outdoor dining, and et cetera. So if I may suggest that we add a condition of approval to require onsite security of at least one security officer, as approved by the Downey Police Department, and shall be onsite at all times that the business is on operation, and that the security plan should be submitted and approved by the Downey Police Department.
Yes.
I have a question in that regard. Do we, does City of Downey recommend, or continue as a practice to have a security guard after midnight on all restaurants, or just a specific one?
We typically have security required when there's entertainment, and not typically a restaurant. So this is at the pleasure of the commission, the applicant mentioned that they have it already as practice. There's concerns about monitoring the operation based on the condition, so that's something that could be considered by the commission.
In that case, I would not make it mandatory, I would make it as an optional thing, for the applicant to provide the security as he fit.
At their discretion?
That's correct. There's no reason for them to spend all these hours, expend all these expenditures on a security guard, whereas not really needed. Maybe the security need to be at the bar, I would see that, yeah, it's a fit, but not for a restaurant. McDonald's don't have security guards, Chick-fil-A don't have security guards, well, this one should be.
Could we make it at a certain time, from a certain time? I don't want to make a discretionary that at 1:30 in the morning, they have no security there on Friday night. You know what I'm saying? So maybe we can make it after 9:00 o'clock or something.
But all the other restaurants don't have it either.
I know, and that's probably a flaw.
But all the other restaurants close at midnight?
Yeah.
Or sooner?
Right. So we're making an exception to let them open until 2:00. Now, it's interesting, if I can ask the Community Development Manager, so some restaurants, I guess they were grandfathered in, like, you know, when I come home really late or something, I go to Jack in the Box on Imperial, and that's open the drive-through 24 hours. So is that because it was there before?
Yes, we did quite extensive research of all the drive-through facilities in Downey, and there was a time period in Downey, I believe, prior to 2008, where a CUP was not required for drive-throughs, and that's typically through the CUP process where hours are added as a limitation of hours is added. So that is why a lot of drive-throughs in Downey don't have conditions of approval related to hours for drive-throughs.
That's interesting, okay, I didn't realize that. But, I see what you're saying, and that, you're staying, right, 11:00 in the morning on there, Raising Cane's, we're making them put a security guard, that doesn't seem fair, right? But, I don't know, I think after a certain time, I don't know, do we want to set a certain hours, after 9:00 AM, or, I don't know, I'm just saying this, but I do want it at a certain time. And I think if we have that option to require security, they're gonna do it anyways, it sounds like, because they're a good corporate citizen, but I don't, it should be good for us to do that. I don't know why it needs Downey Police approval, though, either, I just think we're adding more, another layer of bureaucracy there, that they, I mean, they're not gonna hire a fly-by-night, they're not gonna hire me to stand security there in the corner, you know, they're gonna hire somebody that they feel comfortable, they already said that, and that's what they do, so, I don't know. But I definitely, you know, I agree with you guys, I think we should have security requirements at a certain time, I agree with both of you. So, what do you think, Mr. Psichali?
So, my coming back is, I have no problem with the security, I think it's always, we have a good idea.
Yeah.
It's like having bars on your windows, and, you know, they're trying to tell me something, I mean, this neighborhood is not safe. This neighborhood is safe, but I'm trying to be fair with the applicant, along with all the applicants who close after midnight. Do they have security guards? If they don't, why don't we make them? And does this one stand out? And why? I'm trying to be fair to all the applicants.
Well, I think it's because applicant addressed it in their comments and said they would have it.
Then, and again, I go back to my previous statement, I would leave it to the applicant to provide his own, security at his own discretion, okay?
Sure, to answer your remark on that, again, going back to what we just said, there, at a certain time period, that we didn't even require, you know, they were open 24-hour drive-through, so they're grandfathered in, I get that. But why not do it the right way going forward? And I think now, we're giving them an exception anyways, to be open till 2:00, which other restaurants, if you opened up the restaurant, you know, last year, you could only open till midnight, unless you're really required. So I think that's a good compromise for security, for, I don't think we're punishing them, and I'm a, you know, I'm a businessman, so I get it, and I don't want any more government bureaucracy, but, yeah, I don't know, I don't know, that's, you know what I'm saying? We're saying the same thing, but in a different way, so.
My suggestion would be to have the security on the weekends, when there's probably gonna be more, more people, more activity.
Yeah, how about Friday and Saturday from 9:00 PM on?
That seems fair.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So I'm in my motion on there to include the security from 9:00 to 9:00 PM, on weekends, to closing, and keep the 2:00 AM time that we set.
Let's consider the weekend, Friday, Saturday, does that include Sunday?
I don't know.
I...
You might do that, Friday through Sunday.
Yeah, I agree. I'm sorry, sir, the public hearing is closed, so we can't, you can't address us. Do you want, do we want to reopen it? The gentleman does have a comment, so, okay, we will now reopen the public hearing, and sir, you may come forward.
Thank you for your graciousness in allowing us to comment on the deliberations, I appreciate it, truly. I appreciate the deliberations, and I understand the points of view, and I would like to just note, there is no current city ordinance or policy that we're aware of. I understand we're trying to protect the neighbors from noise, and we will do that. We do have a 15-foot landscape bus far, as I said, but talking about the hours specifically, we are willing to make concession on hours. We do run a tight ship, as you mentioned, Mario, or, I was gonna say council members, that's what I was used to, but, at any rate, and the late-night hours are typically when we would have security at night. And so if it pleases you guys, and you want to try to restrict the hours, perhaps on the weekend hours, we could stay open till 3:00 with security, to make sure that those circumstances you mentioned with the loud cars and any kind of obnoxious behavior is managed very closely. And so I would ask that you consider the days of the week, the work week, perhaps we can be closed at 2:00 in the morning, and on the weekends, you could allow us to stay open more consistent with our typical hours, and engaged with security to make sure that nothing in the parking lot is going on that was gonna disturb our neighbors.
And by weekend, you mean Friday, Saturday? Or do you mean Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Friday, Saturday.
Okay. It's Friday, Saturday, okay.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I mean, it's, we're open to dialogue, we would appreciate consideration for longer hours on the weekend hours, particularly Thursday through Saturday, particularly if we're gonna add security, which we're more than willing to do. It helps to pay for that security if we can be open enough long enough. I know economics aren't a typical barrier in this, but every business, you know, has economic factors that drive it, the hours are certainly part of hours, and we appreciate your consideration of these, and opening the hearing again, thank you very much.
One more question. So if we did the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, what hours would you have the security there? What are you proposing?
This guy's the expert.
Okay.
He knows every operational aspect.
We would actually do the 9:00 to 3:30, specifically those shifts, they don't work three-hour shifts, they want six- or seven-hour, or eight-hour shifts, if we were to stay open longer, yeah. And based off of, you know, you mentioned it, it's not a safe neighborhood, I'm sorry, it is a safe neighborhood, but if it wasn't for some reason, we would staff even more, but, again, it would be up to us, and we have a full security team and everything of that nature to assess it all, but it would be, if we were to stay open later, 9:00 to 3:30.
Okay. Any questions while it's still open, fellow commissioners?
No questions.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead now and close the public hearing.
Since you opened the hearing, am I allowed to speak as well?
I would.
Through the chair, it's your discretion to allow further time, since we did open the public hearing.
Sure, go ahead, sir.
Open the timer.
I'm just curious, moving forward, what is your criteria gonna be for other businesses like Chick-fil-A, or other businesses in the community that wish to open and be competitive with Raising Cane's at 3:30? Are you gonna allow them to do that? Are you gonna create precedence by this action? And what is your criteria gonna be moving forward?
Right, thank you, sir. All right, public hearing is now closed. Do you wish to amend your motion?
No, I mean, that was a good sales job, and I appreciate it, that was good for their standpoint on there, but no, I think 2:00 is good, and to answer that gentleman is, you know, our staff is recommending 2:00, excuse me, midnight, and I think when it comes to the Planning Commission, we'll make that decision on a case-by-case basis, if it warrants. We're doing an exception here to go to 2:00 in the morning, and I appreciate the response and stuff, but no, my original thoughts and comments of, you know, 3:00 or 3:30, it just doesn't make sense to me, so I, my motion will still continue to be 2:00 AM. And, I mean, I think we've compromised a lot, we let them do all the, you know, the inside, the outside, the drive-through, and 2:00 AM for all seven days of the week. I don't think it's safe to be at 3:00 in the morning, that's just my opinion, but I'm the one that gets the vote on this, so my motion will stay that same way. I think that the residents of Downey, and I understand that there's one already open that, I didn't know, and, you know, that was the teller, I wouldn't have done that, but, you know, and I don't know if I've ever eaten there that late, because I don't think I'm up in, and I do the night shift with Downey PD, and we do drive through several places, but, in my opinion, I'm gonna stick to the 2:00 AM timeframe. And to answer that other gentleman's concern, I think it'd come up here, so we'd make it fair to have somebody else on there, and we're following staff's recommendation to a point, too, they recommended midnight, and other places have been at midnight, but, you know, you've got that place on Downey Avenue that's open till 3:30 in the morning, I wouldn't have voted for it, but the prior planning commission voted for that, so.
Okay, and then as to the other part of your motion with the security, can you repeat what it was again?
I think it would be, you know, I'm following what you're saying as far as allowing them to do that, but, I mean, if we could put, since it's gonna be, if we want to do it, you know, 9:00 to closing on the weekend dates, if we want to put that in there, it sounds like they're gonna do that anyways, because they're gonna keep it safe. So I would go along with that, maybe 9:00 to closing on the three days or the two days of the weekend. Does that sound fair? So, it sounds like they're gonna do it anyways, or are we sticking our nose in something that we shouldn't at this point?
Well, I think that's Commissioner Psichali's opinion, right?
Yeah, it's, unless we see some statistics showing otherwise, why make it, why enforce it? I mean, he's paying for it, and I personally don't see any, you don't see any, I mean, if a crime's gonna occur, there's no reason for it to say what is gonna occur between 12:00 and 2:00, you don't know what's gonna happen. And it's up to the incumbent to have, if you want to have security for his own security purposes, let it be.
So did, I don't want to open it up again, but did they say that they were okay with the security on weekends?
The private security...
Can you guys shake your head yes or no?
Private security all the time.
I don't want security all the time.
We manage, we have a whole risk department.
Okay.
Yeah, they assess, they gather the data and see if it needs it, then they bring security out, based on the need, it sounds like. Case by case, got it, okay.
So you don't think, you're not in favor on weekends, having it 9:00 to 2:00?
Through the chair, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can engage in conversation.
You can, right.
We forgot to ask that question.
The back-and-forth with the applicant would need to have the public hearing open again.
Okay, do you want me to open it again?
No, I'm okay with that.
I think we put in too many restrictions, we're gonna put a restriction on the hours, I don't think we should put a restriction on the security, they already said they're gonna supply it.
I'll go along with you on that, yeah, okay, all right. Okay, so I'm in my motion just to have it until 2:00 in the morning, open seven days a week.
Okay. And someone seconded it, correct?
I did.
You did, okay, great. So it has been moved and seconded to approve PLN 23-0... So it has been moved and seconded to approve PLN 23-00123, site plan review, conditional use permit, and lot merger. May we have a vote, and we'll be using electronic voting.
Through the chair, may I have, may staff clarify the motion, just so we have it for the record?
Absolutely.
That condition number 13 would be amended to read, the permitted hours of operation of the restaurant, outdoor dining, and drive-through are every day from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And then condition number 14 pertaining to hours of delivery as are, would remain the same as recommended by staff, which indicates from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., which the applicant has indicated tonight, that they are agreeable to that condition.
That is all correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going back to voting, okay.
Was there a second on that motion?
There was, Commissioner Psycholi.
Motion passes 4-0.
Great, thank you. The action of the planning commission will be final unless the matter is appealed to the city council with the appropriate fee within the next 15-day period as set forth in the city's municipal code. Thank you very much. Best of luck. Now is the time set aside for non-agenda public comment. Persons wishing to address the planning commission on city business not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Persons wishing to address the planning commission on any item listed on the agenda other than the public hearing items may do so at this time. Members of the audience wishing to address the planning commission on non-agenda items may come to the podium when your number is called, and I will be calling the yellow numbers. It is requested but not required that you state your name, your address, the subject matter on which you wish to speak. Please limit your comments to no more than four minutes pursuant to the Brown Act, no discussion or action other than a brief response. Referral to the planning, city planning staff or schedule for a subsequent agenda shall be taken by the planning commission on any issue brought forth that is not listed on the agenda. Do we have any, no, none, that's because I see the number one back there now, I know how to do that.
Oh, I get it, okay.
See the yellow and the green?
Yeah, I didn't realize, okay. See, it took us a while to figure out.
Okay, so we have, yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes.
Real quick comment, I just, I know it didn't really apply to this particular hearing that we just had, but your agenda indicates there's a four-minute time limit, and you made a comment that beginning was a three-minute, it didn't interfere with my presentation, but I just want to make sure we're consistent.
Yes, that's, that's correct. Yes. Okay, let's move on now to consent calendar. So on the consent calendar are two items, the minutes from March 6th, and I believe that's the minutes that Commissioner Gara had some clarification and wanted some corrections made to, is that correct?
I want a lot of corrections, and I do want some clarification, I want to know why it was, when I brought it up last minute, and this gets me hot, because it, it goes to transparency, it goes to misrepresentation, it goes to content, it's just wrong, I made a point of bringing it up, and what it says here is 100% different in attitude than what I said, and I don't understand why we're opposed to putting in what I really said because of, it doesn't make the city look good, or it's a product, so I really resent that, and yet here we are again, I brought it up last minute, last meeting, and I thought, okay, that's a done deal, and the deliberations, the comment, I even at the last minute, last meeting, I brought up at 2:00 hours and 38 minutes of the March 6th, I recited word for word what I said, that should be easy, I could run it again.
Through the chair and to respond to Commissioner and Vice Chair Gara's comments, the minutes included in this, in tonight's agenda are an administrative error. My response at the last minute that we would incorporate Vice Chair Gara's comments, as he stated verbatim, as he additionally stated today, should have been included in the minutes. Our apologies for that administrative error, and further for clarification, yesterday when you spoke to staff, you were misinformed, staff management did not provide any direction that your comments should not be addressed in tonight's minutes. Our apologies from our department, we will correct that and bring the appropriate comments and minutes, the comments reflected in the minutes, thank you, Vice Chair Gara.
And I appreciate that, but I left you two messages on there over the last two days, and I didn't get a returned phone call, that's, that could, this could have been avoided, brought up tonight by you saying that in a phone call back to me, but on Monday and Tuesday, you received a message from me, just wanted to clarify that, so, I, that's why I took exception, but thank you for apologizing, I just think the deliberation part is so important to go on the record, so going forward that we have that, and that's what, that's my thing on there, so, I'm not going to vote, and I hope my commissioners will not vote on the March 6th minutes, until we actually see them again.
I think what I'd like to do is just postpone this until the next planning commission meeting, so that we can vote on it when it's all done correctly. Is that proper, and is that okay? Okay. Do we have any, do we have any other business today?
I'd like to bring up a future agenda item that I would like, that I should have done at the beginning, but I didn't, so I think for us, I'd like to see, can we get a presentation on, because it goes through this department on there, on code enforcement activities, like what's the goals, is it enforceable, or is it punitive? Is it collaboration with the property owners, how, when, and the goals, and how does the city help property owners comply? Because I've been seeing a lot of different property owners complaining, and then I see other ones that, for the same type of fines that they're getting on there, so I'd like to see a presentation back. I take exception with some of the, the code enforcement, the heavy-handedness of code enforcement on people that are willing to work with enforcement, they want to work in enforcement of their tell down there, and yet we still punishment and then still go forward on there, so maybe we could have an activity report back here to the planning commission, I think, and I looked it up, it's within the purvie because the code enforcement works under our community development director.
Okay.
I will discuss that with the city manager's office and our city attorney, and we will come back with a response or an item on that item. On that request from Vice Chair Gara, in addition, in the interim, we can provide a copy of the presentation that staff recently provided to the city council that provides a comprehensive outline of the department's approach on code enforcement, with the council's direction indicating that we would take a proactive approach on code enforcement. It also outlined how we are addressing vacant lots, vacant buildings, commercial standards, et cetera, so in the interim, I will provide that presentation as well, thank you.
And I'm looking for specifically on selective enforcement or the enforcement, you know, I think that being proactive does not mean heavy-handed, and what I'm talking about, I had a great meeting with our community development manager, director with a property owner that's owned a property next to Calvary Chapel for over 10 years, they put up 10 fences, and the homeless keep getting in there, it's a constant battle. In the old days, Dean Milligan, our police chief, used to call me, because I had a relationship, when they, on the council, they came to me, what do you want us to build there, and we, you know, we worked with them on there.
Vice Chair Gara, forgive me for interrupting, but this matter is not agendized for tonight's agenda, so...
I understand that, but I have, I have the preview, I have the preview of making my comments, no, I have my preview to saying my comments on the thing, and I wanted the planning commission to know, because she said that the planning, that the city council, please let me have my moment, okay?
Of course.
If the city council directed her to be proactive, I'd take exception to the proactiveness, which, does that mean you give somebody a ticket when they're working with you? So we had a great meeting with the applicant, the very next day, code enforcement goes out there and cites them for the homeless being on there, which they put a new fence on last Monday, and then they cleaned it up within 24 hours, and today when I drove by there, I went there yesterday, and they were, we had to call the police, because there was nine encampments there, and today when I went on there, they put a whole new fence on it, and yet the homeless people were climbing over the fence as I was there, so you want to keep fining them, they got fined $1,564, one of them was because the weeds were too high and so forth, and they weren't, I have pictures, but what happens is, I go to Del Taco parking lot with Alex Saab, we went to Marisco's Choi, and the parking lot there has two feet high weeds, so are we working on that, are we doing enforcement?
Vice Chair Gara, forgive me for interrupting, but I do know that our community development director has kindly offered a report in the interim, and I, and I believe that she would follow up with you in the ordinary course, but I do have to ask you to refrain from further comment, because that matter is not agendized.
I won't, because I have, I have a hard time getting returned phone calls, so obviously, as I stated before, so I take exception to that, I do not get paid to work with those folks, and yet they're working, they're trying to do what's good, CD, tell me what to build, and yet we fine them for that, and we don't fine other people, so I take exception to
that. Without commenting on the merits of the comments, I would just defer any further response to our community development director.
Okay, all right, well, I wanted the chairwoman of the planning commission to know what's going on.
Got it, okay.
Along with that.
Thank you, sir. I just have one positive comment for the staff, and I should have said it earlier, thank you so much for taking the extra effort on the public input when you did the public hearing notice, that you, you know, you did the 500 feet, but you also put it on doors, you went on the Pico Rivera side, you really went above and beyond to notify the residents of this hearing tonight, and I really appreciate that. Any other business that you have? No? Okay.
I have no other comments, Chair, thank you.
Then we are adjourned at 8:49. Thank you all.